We have our Monday, June 15th study session. Tonight, we'll be talking about audit and financial statements. You want to introduce it, Larry, or?
Mayor members of the council, sorry about that. Just a reminder that if you are going to use your microphone, you might want to put the green button on, the power button on. I'm pleased to introduce the Henry and Horn team. It looks like a party of one tonight, right? They're practicing social distancing as we are, as we present the fiscal year 19 financial statements and audit. And so, I know that there's a PowerPoint presentation that Brian's going to work from, and certainly after he's completed, if the mayor and council has any questions, you can ask me.
Okay, thank you. Any objections to me removing my mask during the presentation?
No, go ahead.
Excellent. Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for having me here this evening to discuss the 2018 audit. You should have received your CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report electronically. Also, there was two other reports here, agreed upon procedures for the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality report, and then the examination for the annual expenditure limitation report that's done for the auditor general of the state. I'm told I have about 30 minutes, so I'm going to just kind of make my way through it, and then if you guys want to wait till the end, or you can interrupt in between, that's fine. Either way, if you have questions, just please let me know. My name is Brian Hemmerly. I am the lead partner on the audit. We had a team of about six full-time government auditors on this city audit this year. We also have a quality control partner review. Mr. Chuck Goodmiller, who's also the managing partner of the firm, did a quality control review over the audit, as he does every year. He was very involved in the audit this year with some of the findings we had. So, I'm required by my standards to talk to you about our internal controls tonight with the city of Casa Grande. I'm required to explain to you that we give reasonable assurance over your annual financial report. We don't give absolute assurance. The difference being that to give absolute assurance, we'd have to test every transaction that the city had during the year. What we do is we use statistically valid sampling and materiality limits by fund to render an opinion on whether or not the statements are materially correct. Policies and issues you'll find in Note 1, the same policies you usually see each year in Note 1. I'm going to go over tonight any difficulties we've encountered, uncorrected misstatements, any disagreements we may have had with management, and then consultation with other firms that occurred during the year. Before I get into the findings we had, I want to discuss with you the good news, which is you did receive a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, used to be called unqualified opinion, over your financial statements under GAAP, so generally accepted accounting principles. We also use governmental accounting standards, and the city follows GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board, statements. So, we'll talk a bit about some of that that occurred during the year, but I want to make sure you understand, you did receive a clean audit report on the CAFR. You received a clean audit report on your government auditing standards for internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, but you did receive material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in those reports. So, we'll discuss some of those now. So, this is a-
Hey, Larry, there's no, there's nothing up here on the dais. I think I see Lisa's got something on her screen. I don't have anything on any of these.
Did you turn it on over here?
No.
Yeah, I know I didn't. I just, I was playing around with it too, Mayor. It should go on.
There we go. Never mind.
Yeah, no problem. So, I'm not sure how many of you had an opportunity to read through some of the detail of the findings, but I'm going to spend some time here going through some of these findings, all the findings with you, so you're well aware of what we found. Quickly, significant deficiencies and material weaknesses differ in the level of severity. So, a material weakness would be more severe than a significant deficiency. So, it would go material weakness, then significant deficiency. Under that, we would have a management letter comment, which we usually just leave in the management letter. I did include the three comments we had in our management letter this year to management, so you'll see those on another slide. And then there's the single audit findings, and those also can be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and that's surrounding your federal funding and the audits of just how you spent your federal money and the controls around that money. So, we'll go through each one of those. So, starting on the first one, 2019-001, significant deficiency, inadequate segregation of duties within payroll. And some of this I'm going to kind of read through, and some of it I'm just going to kind of summarize, but this one I felt like probably needed to be read through. So, as a result of observation and internal control testing over your payroll process, it was determined that the former finance director and two finance department staff members had full access to all read and edit rights within the city's ADP payroll system without any oversight of those duties for a period of time during the fiscal year end June 30, 2019. That's our scope year, so we did not look into 2020. The city does require forms to be properly approved before any changes are made to employee rates in the payroll software. However, there was a time where the human resources, human resources director was not filled, that position was not filled, and the former finance director was essentially both the finance director and the human resources director at the same time. This caused segregation of duties because the former finance director had custody of checks, bank reconciliations, and full access to the payroll system, creating a lack of those segregations. This is important because in order to maintain segregation of duties, you have to have separate people who have authorization, record keeping, and custody of assets such as checks, inventory, capital assets. When there's one person who has access to all three of those things, it can allow for an opportunity to exist for someone to commit abuse, waste, or fraud under government auditing standards. We did plan and perform our audit with the understanding that there was a lack of segregation of duties to try and detect if we thought there was any abuse or waste or fraud in payroll. Our test work did not yield any findings that showed any particular employee's time had been changed that was not allowable by either the department head or someone else. We're just making you aware that that opportunity existed during the 2019 year. Any questions on that first one? Okay, number two here. Whenever we have a prior period adjustment or restatement to the CAFR, we almost always have a finding. It's usually a material weakness. We had two this year. The first one here is related to an incorrect basis of accounting. It gets a bit technical, but essentially, under government auditing standards, your fund statements are, they need to follow modified accrual basis accounting. In this instance, the CDBG grant, the Community Development Block Grant, you make loans to citizens in the city with that grant funding, and the principal in income that's paid on those loans back to the city needs to be recorded in a modified accrual way, essentially a debit to receivable, not receivable, and a credit to deferred revenue. They can't recognize it all at once. They can only recognize it as they bill it annually. Under FASB, a for-profit, they could recognize all of that as revenue in the first year the note is made. That's the difference between governments and for-profits. For whatever reason, in 2018, the subledger system had a change in it where they recognized all the revenue for all the notes from every citizen that was currently outstanding with the city and took that off the balance sheet, the deferred income off the, or deferred revenue off the balance sheet. 2019, by the finance department, and it caused a prior period adjustment because we now have to remove that revenue out of your fund balance, and we need to put it back on the balance sheet. Any questions on that particular instance? Great. 2019-003, this is another prior period adjustment. This is related to the Vilago Community Park development. The park was contributed to the city some years ago, and usually the wording in these findings is very boilerplate because this does happen actually quite often amongst cities and towns. There's sometimes a miscommunication between the planning and development department and the finance department, and the reason why is because it's not really cash changing hands, right? It's a huge development being given to the city, and so it's hard to make sure you're recording all that. So, sometimes those things get missed. In this particular instance, it seems as though there was a lot of miscommunication between the developer and the city, and the end result from working with finances is that they're going to try and to strengthen the agreements with developers to make sure they can give you the proper value during the year that the parks or the streets or whatever's being contributed to the city is valued timely. In this case, it wasn't valued timely, and therefore, an entry had to be made to put the capital asset, the park, on the city's books. It is your park, and then, of course, the other side of that capital asset is a credit to equity. So, in this case, your assets went up and your equity went up, which is good, but it's bad that there was a related finding for that. 2019-004, the next two findings, four and five, are related to bank reconciliations. The first one's related to timing of bank reconciliations, and the second one is related to how bank reconciliations were being performed. 2019-004, management was unable to reproduce details of its monthly bank reconciliations prior to June 30, 2019. As of the date of this report in 2020, management has not yet reconciled its bank accounts to its general ledger. The only bank reconciliation that has been performed as of the date of this report, and this is, I'm sure, has been corrected to a certain extent as of this point, but was June 30. The only reason that June 30, 2019, bank reconciliation has been performed is because we did have a discussion with management that we were unable to render a clean opinion for the city without the bank reconciliation being performed, so they did ask, we did ask them to go out and hire a forensic firm or another firm to perform that bank reconciliation. We ourselves can't perform it because we would be then auditing ourselves. We would lose our independence and objectivity. So, they hired Heinfeld and Meach, a firm in the state of Arizona, well-known, very reputable. They came out, and they did perform a number of procedures and provided memos and documentation on their procedures. They were able to reconcile, to a certain extent, within a material amount, your June 30, 2019, bank statement. We did perform extended procedures over that, and we did feel as though it was properly performed by the other firm, and that is the part of the presentation earlier where I said you have another firm that had come in and taken a look at some things. So, in conjunction with that, we do feel confident that the June 30, 2019, bank reconciliation is correct. However, we don't feel good that the bank reconciliations are being done timely, and accounting standards require that your bank recs are done accurately and timely. Timely is a judgment call, but over a year tends to be untimely, and so, we felt as though it needed to be brought to the attention of governance, your bondholders and your citizens in that particular instance. 2019-005 is bank reconciliation circumventing controls. Management circumvented the processing controls of the monthly bank reconciliation process by recording material unreconciled monthly timing differences to miscellaneous revenues. Our understanding is at the end of each month, when the bank statement was received, that the bank rec was performed up to a certain extent, what they could identify as outstanding checks or deposits in transit, or whatever it might be. The remaining unreconciled difference, for whatever reason, instead of trying to determine what those reconciling items are, there was an entry that was booked to cash and a debit or credit, whatever they needed to make it balance to the bank, to miscellaneous revenue. This is a bad thing to see when you're auditing. This was another area we asked to be looked at by the forensic team that came in from the other firm. Their procedures did not detect anything that they thought was inappropriate. We looked over those procedures. We also then performed our extended procedures. We do need to report to you that, under government auditing standards, we consider this to be an abuse of power by the finance director. It's defined in paragraph 4.07 as behavior that is deficient or improper when compared with behavior that a prudent person would consider reasonable and necessary business practice, given the facts and circumstances. The yellow book, or government auditing standards, indicates that whenever there's abuse, it can be indicative of fraud, and the auditors are required to plan and perform additional procedures to try and detect any fraud. We did that, and none of our procedures yielded any results or findings that we felt met the definition of fraud under statute or under government auditing standards. Any questions on that particular one?
How much money are you talking about there?
So, each month, there would be a debit or credit to cash and a debit or credit to miscellaneous revenue to make it work. Over the course of the year, there was over a million dollars in each direction, so over a million dollars in debits and over a million dollars in credits. At the end of the year, when you net it all together, it was closer to $300,000 miscellaneous revenue credit. We are not sure what those reconciling items were each year, but Heinfeld and Meach, or Heinfeld and Meach and Company, was able to take the $300,000 difference at the end of the year and reconcile that out to the outstanding checks and deposits and transits necessary to make the June 30 bank reconciliation correct. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then when you talk about the June 30 bank reconciliation, so the, for everybody's sake, the year end is June 30. So, when you do that, is that the one-month statement, or are you talking about from, from July 1?
So, essentially, the idea is because you had a million 300,000 in one direction and a million in the other direction, that all those reconciling differences would have over time reconciled out.
Should have been the year.
We just don't really know what they were.
Right.
And so, we were, or not, I'm sorry, not us, Heinfeld and Meach and Company was able to determine what they felt was the remaining reconciling items at June 30 that they believe probably hadn't worked itself out over these months, and that's what they came to. Does that help answer the question?
How, how often do we hire this forensic accounting firm? Have we done it before?
Not to my knowledge.
No?
I've never seen it.
Okay. So, it's uncommon to have someone coming and do this?
Yeah. The only reason we requested management do this is because we were going to have a impairment of independence if we started doing bank reconciliations ourselves. There's many ways they could have, management could have went about it, but they, I think, ultimately decided to go with a reputable firm in the, in the state and have them take a closer look at all these things.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I can, I was going to save this to the end after Brian had finalized the findings. The, I want to give the council and our residents a bit of, a bit more information regarding this upcoming, this last year, this particular fiscal year, fiscal year 19. Pardon me?
It'd probably be better if you wait till after.
Okay.
I think.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
Turn that volume down, Larry. They were turning it down up there.
Any other questions on 2019-005? Okay. 2019-006, this is valuation of utility judgments receivable. The wastewater fund has a number of delinquent accounts that the former finance department and the attorneys of the city had rendered judgments to try and collect on. Those judgments were still technically receivables. When we received the listing for those judgments, the utility judgment receivable account balance did not match the year-end subledger, and additionally, more than half of the judgments had not received payment in over a year. So, we felt as though a allowance for doubtful accounts and bad debt expense needed to be adjusted. I think there was one initially, but we felt as though it needed to be materially restated to have a higher allowance. We worked with management on what that would be, what they honestly think they feel like they can still collect on, and so, that entry was booked to the CAFR this year, and we have the material weakness related to that particular situation. It's a tough situation, I know, because it's hard to turn off people's wastewater, if not impossible, so. But that is 2019-006, any comments or questions on that?
And so, these are actual judgments that have been rendered, not necessarily cases that we're working on?
That's right. And, to a certain extent, my understanding is there are liens on these properties, so when people eventually sell their property, the city should collect on them, so we do leave quite a bit in there, but it's an awfully large, it's about a half a million dollars of receivables in the wastewater fund that are not current.
I think seeking and receiving judgment is a fairly new practice for the, for the city. In the past, did we book delinquent sewer bills?
Yes.
In a different way, or?
Yes, essentially, we just, they just moved the receivable down to a new receivable. It was like wastewater receivables that have been years old down to judgments receivable, which now have judgments attached to them and are more likely to get collected. But when we tried to audit it, the listing didn't agree, so there was missing judgments on the listing, and then there were also many judgments where people still just weren't paying. It'd been over a year since their last payment. Some dated back to 2013, from the last time they ever paid the city, not just the judgment. 2019-007, reconciliation of subledgers to general ledgers. This is a situation where we, in auditing the revenues and expenditures, there were multiple accounts that we came across in the general ledger that did not agree to the subledger, the CIS or COMDEV subledgers that are being used. This is probably really honestly a matter of turnover in the finance department and things probably not having the ability to be reconciled timely before the audit. I think finance is working on trying to get all of that reconciled as fast as they can.
So, is it your belief that once that's done, it's going to reconcile?
Well, there were certain items that were unreconcilable.
Okay.
And so, management took the approach that material adjustments were needed to be made to miscellaneous expenses in the general fund to properly state the assets and liabilities and revenues that were unreconcilable to the subledgers. So, right now, it's sitting in equity. If it's reconciled to a point where they can say, oh, we found it, we know what it is, we know what the problems are, they may have to pull that back out of equity, or if it's trivial, they can just run it through the P and L again, but for the most part, that was how the differences were dealt with. Okay, the next one is 2018-001. The reason for the 18 is because it was the material weakness the city received last year. It continues to be a material weakness this year, so we have to keep it for the original date. This one is related to cutoff. So, essentially, there were multiple revenue and expense accounts that we found where the transaction might have occurred in July but should have been posted back to June, or vice versa, occurred in June and should have been booked to prepaid, or something of that nature. Enough of those transactions were found that required us to do a material weakness because we had a material number of transactions we had to adjust for. So, really just accrual-based reconciliations. Our recommendation is to have a checklist at the end of the year to go through each accrual-based account and make sure you're capturing all your unrecorded liabilities or any prepaid's or receivables, things of that nature. Okay, so those are the significant deficiencies and material weaknesses over financial reporting. We have other observations. These went in the management letter, so they're not in the CAFR. Procurement. You have federal funding. The federal government requires that when you spend their money, you follow their procurement rules, and what they want to see is in your procurement policies that they match their requirements in what's called the Uniform Guidance. That's set by the Office of Management and Budget and the Treasury Department of the United States. In your guys' case, your procurement policy actually does match very nicely to the federal governments with the exception of one area, and that's related to conflicts of interest with employees and members of governance, so city council. This isn't saying that you have conflicts of interest. This just says we'd like to see the policy become in line with the federal government's requirements for policies on conflicts of interest. It'll be an easy fix. Honestly, I'm sure it's probably already fixed, so at the time of our audit, that was a finding for procurement. New bank accounts. We recommend a written formal authorization from the city manager or city council is obtained for all new accounts open with financial institutions during the year. obtained for all new accounts open with financial institutions during the year and the authorization is maintained by the finance department. This is a result of a number of bank accounts that were opened during the year. I think, I want to say there were maybe six or eight. I don't remember entirely off the top of my head, but a number of new accounts, they had very little transactions running through them, but they were new accounts that were opened. One of the reasons this is a hot button finding for a lot of cities and towns is because the largest municipal fraud that's ever occurred in the United States was in Dixon, Illinois. The finance director opened a number of accounts without anyone's knowledge somehow with a local bank and she was able to run fraudulent activity through those accounts. Our understanding is that the signature cards on these new accounts were signed by the city manager, so he was aware of it. The timing of whether or not it was something that was done before or after the accounts were open, we'd like to see tightened up a bit with a policy that says there's written approval from either all of you or the city manager and that the finance director doesn't have sole discretion to open up any accounts with any financial institutions without somebody else knowing it and that it's written and maintained on a document somewhere. And then due-to-do-from accounts. Most governments account for their cash with what's called pooled cash, either in the general fund or in a pooled cash memo fund. The city of Casa Grande has always accounted for their cash this way until this year. For whatever reason, the former finance director decided to use due-to-do-froms as a treasury. She used them to move cash between funds. And instead of using pooled cash, which is generally accepted amongst governments, she created, I think, 168 due-to-do-from journal entries between funds. We asked that management also use Heinfeld Meach and Company, their forensic team to come out and take a look at those transactions for any unusual activity. Their memos that they rendered to us did not yield anything that showed it was unusual. So that's why it's not a material weakness or significant deficiency. It's just a other observation for recommendation. We asked that you use due-to-do-froms in accordance with GASB Statement 34, in which it's only for short-term or long-term interfund borrowings between funds and that you maintain your cash activity between funds the way you've always done it, as pooled cash. Okay, this is my last slide. So three things here. Federal single audit. Federal government requires when you spend $750,000 of their money on grants, that you get a special audit on those grants. You spent 1.1 million as a city in 2019, so you receive a single audit, and I believe you receive a single audit just about every year. Your single audit received an unmodified opinion, which means a clean opinion. However, we did have two control deficiencies that we considered to be significant deficiencies. So not as bad as material weaknesses, but bad enough that we thought needed to be reported to the federal clearinghouse. So we've uploaded your CAFER to the federal clearinghouse today, actually, and it was received by them today. And the two comments, the first one is on payroll. Both your CDBG fund and your homeland security grant, sorry, CDBG grant and homeland security grant, CDBG is your community development block grant. Those two grants were tested as major programs this year for your single audit. For two of eight payroll transactions tested, I believe that was, that population was exhausted in our testing. Management did not approve employee time at ADP payroll system. And for one of 40 payroll transactions tested with the homeland security grant, no one had approved the time on the test that we had done for that particular employee. You are not out of compliance with these grants. You just have a weakness in your internal control around the grants. So because of that, we had to test, we had to pull more of a population or a sample of the population for compliance test work, but we were required to explain to you that you have a control deficiency around payroll for federal grants. And that's, that's a pretty common finding, actually. It's just a matter of getting someone to make sure ADP does not allow the time to get paid without getting approved by some type of supervisor who knows that that time should go to a federal grant and that person should be paid through federal grant money. Okay, the second significant deficiency is only for your CDBG, your community development block grant. This is related to the program income. So we're going back to the loans that the city makes to citizens. The interest income that you make on those loans can only be spent on CDBG. It can't be used for other purposes of the government. We found that the amounts collected during the year for interest income did not agree to the amounts in the general ledger. So we had to report to the federal government that the interest income on those loans did not agree and that there was a lack of internal controls in reconciling the sub-ledgers. It's very similar to the finding we had on financial reporting. It's kind of just in there again for federal grant purposes, essentially. Okay, expenditure limitation report. The Economic Estimates Commission for the State of Arizona said you could spend $220 million this year and the auditor general wanted us to make sure you spent less. After calculating all the expenditures for the city, the, you had 81 million roughly that was spent based on the calculation set by statute that the auditor general wants us to look at, which means you complied with the expenditure limitations for the year. The Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Compliance had one finding this year. So this is for your landfill and the Department of Environmental Quality wants us to do calculations with your CAFER to make sure you're in compliance with certain things. The city was in violation of Statute 258 dot 74, it's all up there, of municipal solid waste landfill criteria, Code 40 Federal Regulation Part 258, which basically states that you had an operating deficit that was greater than 5% of the total annual revenues as calculated from the CAFER. We calculated a deficit of 6.85%. Management incurred with that deficit calculation. It's taking revenues and expenses from multiple opinion units, funds and both governmental and enterprise wastewater and, and landfill. And you had a 6.85% deficit in 2019. 2018 did not have a deficit. The requirement is you don't have a deficit for two years in a row, which means next year, even if you don't have a deficit, you're going to have this finding again because 19 had the deficit. Do you understand what I'm saying? So it says you have to be, you can't have a deficit for two years back. So 18 didn't have deficit, 19 did. Next year, when the audit's done, if 20 doesn't have a deficit, 19 still had the deficit. So we're going to have to report it again because you'll have it for at least the next two years. And that are the findings we had this year.
So was there any fraud?
I thought you would ask me that. We planned and performed our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That says we have to test extended procedures. We cannot be the internal control that prevents or detects fraud, but our procedures, if they did detect fraud, would have to be reported to you. We, our procedures did not detect anything that we considered to be fraud under definitions of statute or the definition of government auditing standards.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate you asking that directly. And you know what, actually, Brian, I, I just felt sick during, during the presentation. You know, I've been on the city council for 10 years and, um, you know, we, I've never seen this and it's disappointing. Of course, you know, Larry, we've had discussions. You know, last year, we, you know, we knew there was findings and they, we thought that there was systems that were put in place and reorganization. And so obviously that didn't happen. So I think, well, first, our new finance director, I'm sorry. Um, you know, and, and I, and I was in the interviews with Angel and I know you identified a lot of these issues, which, which were great. And, you know, we, we feel good that you're coming in, but I, you know, I, I feel bad that you're in this position. But my question to you, Brian, is, you know, I mean, that's great, there's no fraud, but do we, do you feel that you've captured everything and we really know what we need to do to move forward and we can do it in a timely manner?
We captured, we believe we captured everything that materially affected your CAFER. So the answer is no. There are immaterial items that are, uh, need to be dealt with. I don't know that they'll ever become material, but I think that they can be dealt with over the next year. Will they be dealt with before your next audit? Today's June 15th and the end of the year's in 15 days. So I don't know that next year's report is gonna be, you know, a great report. I hope it is. I do think you had a lot of turnover in the finance department. I mean, almost everybody. And that caused quite a bit of, uh, problems with financial reporting and reconciliations and just things getting done that needed to get done. And so a lot of those will come off because they'll have plenty of time in finance department to hopefully reconcile things before we come out or before anyone does any audits. We were planning on coming out Wednesday to start looking at what is finance already put in place to start fixing these problems because we have been working with them for the last six months to, as we find things, we say, okay, we found another one, okay, and then they come up with their responses. And if you read their responses, which are at the very end of the, the report, they do detail things they've already started doing. And so a lot of thing, and that's been uploaded to the federal government as well. So the federal government will see what the city has already put in place to start dealing with some of these issues. Does that answer your question?
It does. So how does this report affect us? I mean, is it, you know, is it the bond ratings? Does it affect us, you know, how, in the long run, where, what do we have to worry about?
I can't, I can't really speak to S and P and how they'll rate. I think everyone got their report, the auditor general got it, Emma, the Chicago Mercantile Exchange, anyone invested in your bonds will see it and read it, but I can't really speak to how it'll affect your bond rating. Yeah.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, would it be very burdensome to, especially since, and we've got a new director in that, to maybe do some intermittent, take a look and say, here's what we have and some improvements to make, that there be a report maybe three months down the road to say, okay, now here's where we're at, now here's where we're at, now we're, instead of waiting until next
I think that's up to management, but yeah.
Just kind of an update of saying, here's what we had, here's what we're doing.
A progress report kind of a thing.
Thank you. Yeah, that's exactly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the statement I was going to make a few minutes ago, and some of you still may have additional questions and certainly will fill those. And, and, and Mr. Hemerle had outlined one of the important points that I wanted to point out to the council, and that is that we have made responses to every one of the findings and, and understand the, the items that need to be corrected. We, we certainly accept that. Uh, the, the, and it's been somewhat mentioned a couple of times as part of the presentation, part of the dialogue. Obviously, this last, the, the year that the audit was being conducted, fiscal year 19, was a bit of an anomaly and, and Councilwoman Fitzgibbons is absolutely right. We're, we're not accustomed to sitting here at the presentation of the financial statements and having these types of findings. We did have a tremendous amount of turnover in the, in the finance department in fiscal year 20, shortly after the audit had commenced and right about the time that they were conducting their fieldwork. And the important point to that, that I guess a couple of important points that I want to, I want to make known is it wasn't just, we, we had a number of our key accounting staff that would typically handle and manage the reconciliations of, of the general ledger and participate, that would participate in these audits that had departed the organization. And, and my sense is, is that drove some of the issues. I, I, as I had, have explained to the auditors, believe that if we had the existing staff here during the completion of that audit, they very well could have explained some of the issues that we're dealing with tonight. Would it have resulted in, in, uh, the same findings potentially? But I, I honestly believe that, that with a staff that understood exactly why the transactions were being made and the approach that they were using from the process could have navigated a little bit more thoroughly. But, but because we had, because we had no staff, we had, we had interim staff, we had individuals that we were hiring outside of the organization attempting to assist us in essentially putting to bed the, 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 the concern that the mayor expressed here earlier tonight. And it's one of the reasons that we brought the firm in because quite candidly, at that point, we didn't have a technical staff, that person that could have been able to manage this. And so we did allocate the resources to ultimately have experts and, and I consider, I consider Heinfeld Meach and Company very, very capable and prominent auditors and firm. And so we brought someone in that we knew could dissect essentially the, the issues that were being identified as part of the audit. Now, I, Mr. Hemerle outlines the fact that we find ourselves, unfortunately, because of the delays in getting this audit done, we're 15 days from the end of this fiscal year. And I, and I know that, and, and again, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons is absolutely right, our new finance director, who is attending her first council meeting tonight, obviously had, had discovered some of the issues during the interview. When I say issues, I primarily understood that we had not issued the CAFER, which is always going to be a red flag to somebody that has good technical skillsets in the, in the direct, in the, in that position. And, and, and I, we've had numerous conversations since her arrival. We've, what I want the council and our community to know is that we have hired some very competent staff and I'm feeling, I'm feeling very good about the, the technical skillsets that they bring to the table. But more importantly, I, I do want to let everybody know that from a, from a cash standing, from a fund balance standing, our financials are still very solid. Um, we, you know, we've always prided ourselves on being an organization that manages our money very conservatively and appropriately. And if you look, if you, if you understand and you look at those financial statements, you'll see that from a, from a strength of financial condition perspective, we're still, we're still very strong. Brian may disagree with that, but that's, that's my view. Are there some issues that we need to correct through process and systems that I am confident that the new staff, our new technical staff will be able to establish a, a much clearer picture for when the auditors come in? I anticipate that some of that will happen this year, this upcoming fiscal year. But as, as Brian has pointed out, they're going to be in, in, you know, anywhere in the next couple of months, they're going to be in to start their, their work. And some of these things, what may take us a full year to get back on track. But we are working, we are, as a team, going to be working very diligently to address as many of these issues as we possibly can. Some of them have already been fixed. And, and, and again, I just, I, I want to point that out to the council that it was a bit of an anomaly in the year because of the number of staff, the staff members that departed, that held key accounting positions. And, and there were times that we had difficulty filling some of those positions and the vacancies lasted months, sometimes as many as six months before we were able to bring somebody in and begin to participate in that. And so the other question that was asked is specifically about the bond rating. There, there could be a situation where our bond rating is impacted. We won't really know that until they have a chance to review and, and evaluate. The, the, the important component, at least at this point, is that we're not issuing any debt. There's not any really planned on the horizon. I, I do feel that we were, we were on a pathway to correct these issues and get back to a point that meets the expectations of management and the council, that, that, that we are coming in each year with, with very few, if any, types of findings.
Larry, can we, can we still maybe put something out on the horizon for, for a recap, but just a?
Progress.
A progress report?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for reminding me of that. Intermediate, these intermediate types of reports or updates to the council, you know, obviously, we can try to schedule those around some level of the fieldwork that's being done and the like. They're not going to have, the auditors will not have a, what I would consider to be a finalized financial statement at that point that meets all of the GASB requirements. But I do think that as we begin to, to go down that path, you couple the, the arrival of the new staff, they, we can certainly, in combination with the auditors beginning some of their fieldwork, I think it would be a good time for us to be able to come back and begin to kind of give an overview of the progress that we're making.
Yeah, if we can just use this report.
That's what I was going to ask.
And then come back in a couple of months after maybe our finance director has a chance to get her arms around it. And then just give us an update on, on the progress, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks. Larry, I know this must be hard for you as you were the former finance director and, and I mean, I know you're not happy, we're not happy, I'm not happy. It's hard to sit here, like Lisa said, it's just awful. I like the idea of the interim reports, so it doesn't get to this point again. Maybe we have some better ideas. Rob has come in and, and he's done a good job interim and trying to get a handle. I know you were handed a bucket of spaghetti and said, make this work. And then Angel, that was one of the most impressive things about her interview that caught me is she recognized this and wrote a great response about, she recognized what was going on. So I hope, I, I feel you're up to the challenge or you wouldn't be here. So I'm sorry that you come in that way.
Yeah.
You know?
Welcome.
Welcome to Casa Grande. We're happy to have you. But I appreciate you being candid about it and it. But I appreciate you being candid about it, and, I mean, there's no other way to do it.
Right.
And the other question I'd have, and I don't know, it's probably more to Larry, but should we maybe retain that firm again, that forensic firm, to really go back, or should we wait until we get some of this auditing done? Because that, that bothers me, because it sounds like we haven't found any missing money yet, but, you know, just some little stuff that I've, we've had conversations about, Larry. If it's in the little details of different accounts, where, you know, what are we doing with all this, so?
And, 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 Mr. Mayor...
I hate to spend more money, but...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman specifically to that. I, I will tell you that intuitively, I don't think there is, that, that we're going to find any missing money, but I think it's inherent that we ensure that we are accounting for all of the transactions accurately. And, and, and I can better answer that question. Team, has that a chance to really become more familiar with, with the, with where, where they're finding themselves in the review of the financial statements? But I will say that if, if there's ever a chance or ever a time that, that we feel that we will need somebody to do that, we definitely will be doing that.
And I, I'm glad you're the city manager right now, too, because you have an extensive financial background, too, so you can understand.
I've indicated that there's times that I've forgotten, then, these days. It's, it changes a lot, but, but I, but certainly, it, just like for the, for the mayor and council, and I think, I think Mr. Hemerle can attest to this, when, when we met, obviously, it, it, it causes you to pause because we've always had a very, what I consider to be a solid financial statement, and a very accurate financial statement. And, and, and from a management perspective, we've been somewhat concerned and, and attempted to do what we could to, to, to ensure that the, the, the financial statements, particularly the balance sheet, is presented fairly. I, we, we did talk about this on the exit interview, if you will, with the auditors, that we've probably done more testing on our balance sheet in fiscal year 19 than we had the prior years.
And, and one more thing is I want people to know that this isn't the first time you're hearing it. I mean, we've had these discussions over the past six months, so it's not just coming to light tonight. It's been a lot of work and everything, so people know that we are looking out and trying to figure out what's going on. Hence, we have a new finance director, so good luck.
Donna, you had a question?
Just a couple of things. You know, one of the things I think that we need to realize is that audits are here to tell a story. And there's a lot of good things that, you know, that we find in our audits, but this is concerning the things that we've heard tonight. And I agree, I think that we do need to have progress reports, and I don't think that, for me, it's necessarily coming from the firm, but from our staff, our new staff. And I think that from, from my standpoint, I want to know the good and the bad. I want to know the progress of the, the mistakes that were made and how we're, you know, we're fixing those, and the new processes that we're taking in order for these things not to happen again. And I think the correction action plan is where we need to move from here forward, because this isn't the norm for us, and we know that. And so, you know, as Larry said, we've had a lot of turnover, and we understand that, but for our citizens, that's no excuse, because we are given the duty to keep things going professionally and honestly. And I'm glad that you asked a question about fraud, but the bottom line is that we, we owe it to our citizens to know what is going on. And so, you know, for me, I, you know, I, I know that when I first came on, I was always asking and calling and, and looking at our claims, and, and I would ask questions about, well, what is this claim for? Because I don't understand what this means and where, where this is going. And so those are the little things. It's the bigger picture that we're talking about today that, you know, perhaps we need to educate ourselves a little bit more on and, and maybe ask more questions, too. I think that we all have a responsibility. So for me, moving forward, I think the story is that we need to do better.
Bob?
Mayor, I'll withdraw. I, I echo everything that Matt and Donna just said. I'd only be repeating it, so thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one more point. I just wanted to, you know, we talk about moving forward, and I just want to make sure that we're not throwing this at our new finance director.
Right.
You know, I just hope that you see that we all, the situation we're in, that you need to be upfront and honest and direct on what you need to, to move it forward, because this shouldn't, I mean, of course, the burden's kind of passing over to you, but, but we need to make sure that we have the resources and what you need to get it back on track.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, then, thank you very much.
I guess, thanks.
For that pretty picture.
Thank you.
No other actions tonight, then we'll adjourn this, adjourn the study session, and we'll move into our CFDs that we are...